Good evening, residents of the city of Ventura. Tonight we'll have our second forum for districts five and six city council candidates. With us tonight, we have all six candidates, two in district five and four running in district six. We're going to have opening statements of one minute, closing statements of one minute, and we'll have responses as well. At this time, I'd like to introduce the president of the League of Women Voters, Kathy Morgan.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for being here. The League of Women Voters was founded in nineteen twenty with the mission of educating a new group of voters, women, who were granted the right to vote nationwide with the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment six months later. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization committed to providing voters with factual, nonbiased information, and as such, does not support a particular candidate or political party. The League today continues with the mission of empowering voters and defending democracy by registering voters, providing information about the candidates and the issues, getting out the vote, and supporting fair and transparent elections. The candidate forums are an opportunity for voters to hear from the various candidates and to get the information they need to make an informed choice when they vote. Attendees to the forum are invited to submit the questions they wish asked of the candidates when they register. The candidates have not been provided the questions in advance, and each candidate will have the opportunity to answer the questions posed. We are glad that you are here tonight to hear from our candidates. We hope that you get the information you need to make an informed choice. And at this time, I would like to turn it back to tonight's moderator, David Marin. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And for the audience, I'm sharing my screen showing the different districts in the city of Ventura. We have seven districts. Tonight, we're listening to the candidates running in district five, sort of towards the east end over here in the light blue. And then down towards the south is district six. Even if you're not living in one of these districts, you don't care about which candidates you like, so that you may be inclined to vote or support them financially, walk for them, do other things. And every candidate, regardless of district, has to represent the entire city's views and do the best job they can. So we're glad you're watching, and we'll go ahead and get started with our opening statements. We randomly drew numbers earlier, and we will begin with our first candidate, Jim Duran in district number six. Jim, when you're ready, you have one minute. Well, it would help if I unmuted you. So that's my fault. Jim, when you're ready, one minute.
Hi, my name is Jim Duran, and I'm a lifelong resident of Ventura, and I have a passion to see our community thrive. I'm committed to finding practical solutions for homelessness, supporting a strong local economy, enhancing essential core services, and addressing our aging infrastructure. I plan on making Ventura attractive to companies that can pay livable incomes, and I'll work hard at eliminating barriers that keep us from thriving and prospering. Our infrastructure is aging, and I will ensure that we have smooth streets and sidewalks. I will work closely with police and fire to enhance public safety. If we don't feel safe in our own community, then we don't have a community. We must strengthen our partnership with the county and work together on practical solutions for drug addiction and mental illness. Over the past decade, I have worked in collaboration with several organizations to decrease our unhoused populations. In regard to homelessness, I will continue to create innovative solutions that will produce positive results for the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Lori Brown.
Hi, I'm Lori Brown, and I've effectively represented the city of Ventura in the sixth district since two thousand and eighteen. As incumbent, I plan to finish the work I started. I believe Ventura's health and economy are vital components to the sustainability of our future. And the Climate Action Resiliency Plan and emergency preparedness are important parts of this. I have remained a constant advocate for firefighters, and I will continue to champion affordable housing alternatives. As chair of the General Plan Committee, we, over the last two years, we ushered in making sure that the housing element got approved with pro-housing designations and the eleven recommendations from Homes for All, which is a group of housing advocates who came together and coalesced to petition your council members. I have an institutional experience, a can-do approach, and I care about a Ventura. I've been steadfast during difficult times, and I ask that.
Thank you there.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. Our next candidate is Steph Carver.
Hi, everyone. Nice to meet you all. I'm Steph Carver. Since two thousand and sixteen, I've been an environmental researcher on the Impact and Innovation Team of Patagonia. So I research and quantify the various environmental impacts of their products, and I work with designers and developers to reduce those. Prior to that, I was getting my degrees in hydrology and environmental science up in Santa Barbara, so not too far. And so really, that makes me qualified on water resource topics. I'm a leader on climate. In fact, tomorrow I'm heading to New York to speak at Climate Week. And I decided to run, first off, because I love this town. My whole family, I moved here, my whole family followed, so they clearly love it now, too. And I've been on the General Plan Advisory Committee with Lori since early last year, which has been an amazing opportunity. It really, I guess, the vision of the future, but I'm ready to make that a reality, and most importantly for me is transportation. Getting kids the ability to walk to Montalbale Elementary and around town, getting to the bus stop on a sidewalk, that's really important. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Marie Lakin.
Good evening. My name is Marie Lakin, and I'm a thirty-seven-year resident of East Ventura. I've raised my family here. As chair and vice chair of the East Ventura Community Council, I've been working really hard to make sure city leaders hear your voices. I'm the longest-serving city commissioner, and I've been a leader in many local nonprofits for these efforts. I was named Ventura Citizen of the Year, Outstanding Citizen. It's very honored. Professionally, I was employed for many years by a Ventura Public Relations Firm, which worked with local businesses, helping them be successful. I went on to work for the State Assembly and State Senate on important public policy dealing with land and water issues. I have built relationships, and I have the experience necessary to advocate for a safer community, new businesses, well-paved streets, sustainable water supplies, preserving open space, and amenities for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Our next candidate is Danny Correo.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. First of all, I want to thank David and Kathy and the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. My name is Danny Correo. I've lived here in Ventura close to sixty years, most of my, all of my life. I have a decades history, a resume of giving back to the community and being a service to the residents, including serving my country. I was United States Marine Corps right out of high school. I've also served on many other committees. I was a former library commissioner for the city of Ventura and recently on the Measure O Tax Oversight Committee. I've also been a big brother in the Big Brother, Big Sister Program. I've served on several nonprofit organizations. I've been an umpire and a coach at Saticoy Little League, and my mother still lives in the home that I was raised over on the east end. I love this city. This is my second time running for the city, and I take this opportunity to seek your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll wrap up with our candidate number six here, Bill McReynolds.
Good evening. My name is Bill McReynolds, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters of Ventura County for having us all here tonight. I have raised my family here in East Ventura. This is where I've chosen to raise them, and that is one of the most important things that, to me, and what I will do is ensure to protect and enhance the quality of life for everyone here in the fifth district. My wife is an educator. I have three sons, twenty, seventeen, and thirteen. And I often ask myself, how are they going to get to stay here in Ventura? My goal is to make sure that we have safety, public safety, that we have enhanced revenue, and we have the infrastructure to, that will allow them the opportunity to stay here in the years to come. And I am an active member of the community, having served on the Street Tree Advisory Committee, chaired the Parks and Rec Commission, and I'm currently also on the General Plan Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with Marie on this next, on the first question we have tonight, and Marie will talk about homelessness and the unhoused. Marie, what do you think are the responsibilities the city has to shelter unhoused residents? And what are some of the solutions you would put into place to deal with this issue?
Well, I just spent two days with our downtown ambassadors and our patrol task force, and they took me everywhere, and it was really an eye-opener. I mean, you see them out on the streets, but I spent time down in the outback. And I spent time talking to a homeless woman who was about ready to give birth, and no one could get a word out of her. These people are doing the best job they can, but we need more resources. We need permanent supportive housing. We need to build out the floors above the arch homeless center. And I was really, really happy to see that the council finally added two, or I think, two or three more officers just to deal with our issues downtown and other places, too. And, you know, it's really important to distinguish between the criminal vagrancy that goes on there and the homelessness, and they're absolutely two different topics, and they both have different solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Jim, same question to you. What are your plans for dealing with the homeless? Do you think the city has a responsibility?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry, Bill, we'll start you. I'm Jim. Okay, things are jumping around on my screen way too fast, so I gotta pick up my game. Jim, same question to you about the homeless.
Yeah, so yeah, of course, we have a responsibility, but, you know, I've worked with the homeless population for well over a decade. I mean, going on to two decades, and I will tell you, we have come up with solutions that, that work, and it's because we hold people accountable. We put in programs. I mean, I've been able to, in the last seven and a half years, house over four hundred people. That's a hundred and ten families that have not gone back into homelessness. And the reason is, is because, you know, homelessness is really complicated, but you got some core issues. You got mental illness, and you have drug addiction, right? And so we can house people, but what the reality is, is we need to deal with the mental illness, and we need to deal with the drug addiction. And so when we have more methadone clinics in Ventura than we do rehab centers, we got a problem. When we only have thirty-two beds for mental health, we have a problem. So we need to deal with those issues before we can actually help people get housed.
Thank you. Danny, same question to you. Does the city have a responsibility, and what are your plans to deal with homelessness?
Yes, absolutely. We have a responsibility, and, you know, it doesn't help that, to some extent, you know, we serve as a county seat. You know, when people are thrown in jail, and they come out of jail at one or two in the morning, where do they go? You know, they try to find a tree or a bench and try to sleep the night. You know, I agree with what Jim said. There's three components to homelessness. One of them is the law. We have to make sure that we're following the law, not violating their rights. Number two is the mental health. You know, a lot of these people decide, and they want to remain out in the open and homeless and not be directed to living conditions that you and I are used to. And the third one is case management. So we need to hire more social workers, more people that, professionals that will address this from the three-sided approach, following the law, knowing, understanding the mental health, and case management of these people that are out in homelessness. So we have that obligation to take care of them.
Thank you. Lori, please share with us your thoughts on homelessness.
Um, I believe the question was, uh, can you repeat the question?
Responsibility to the homeless, and what would be your plans to deal with it?
The city absolutely has a responsibility as a partner with the other nine cities as well as the county. So the county continuum of care is that body that attempts to negotiate, mediate between the ten cities about what is the best approach. And that is, as a result of that, the city of Ventura was one of the first cities to establish. And I was happy to vote for that, to have the arch transitional housing shelter with Mercy House running it. But there also is the issue of CalAim not having accountability of the funding that comes from the state down to the local bodies. But I also believe that cities during the time when Project Room Key, because I work for Whole Person Care, which provides wraparound services on housed individuals, that they miss the opportunity to purchase some of those hotel sites in order to make them permanent places for them to live, as opposed to just giving vouchers.
Thank you. Bill, share with us your thoughts about the city's responsibility and your ideas to deal with homelessness.
First, absolutely, is the city's responsibility to deal with the homelessness that we see in our community. So we need to extend the hand of compassion out to those experiencing homelessness. And we need to extend the hand of compassion to those that live and reside here in Ventura also, and realize that it's a two-way street. So I am in favor of expanding our social services to address the needs of the homeless population so that we can also have the patrol task force do the required enforcement of the vagrancy issues that often follow along with it. But it's a two-phase approach, and the one thing that we must realize is that there is no magic pill that's going to resolve homelessness. It's going to be a more of a salad bar approach. We're going to, what brings each person into homelessness is completely different, and we're going to need to provide different services to each one of those individuals. And I agree with Councilmember Brown that we need to look into the Project Home Key funding as a potential source of additional beds in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll wrap up with Steph as far as your plans for homelessness.
Thanks, David. You're doing great. So homelessness is very personal to me and my family. I've had family members who have been homeless and unhoused for extended periods of time. It's terrifying, and so I'm very empathetic for those who are unhoused. First and foremost, Ventura needs an ordinance that sets a solid roadmap for emergency shelters, transitional housing, and permanent housing over the next three or five years. In addition to that, we need a solid, transparent website that shows the exact bed count and room count and availability for emergency shelters. I've been in a situation where I was desperately trying to find someone to shelter housing, and I couldn't do it, and it was terrifying. And I don't want anyone else to have to experience that. And third, and importantly, similar to how we have sustainability education at schools, we really need to broaden mental health education in our schools, normalize therapy, and really make sure our kids at a very young age have the resources that they need so they don't get into drugs and alcohol and issues and potential homelessness in the future.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next question. Danny, you're up first on this. We'll stay with housing for the moment. So we have a lot of questions regarding what can the city do to increase affordable housing? And if you want to share with us, Danny, your thoughts about particular plans to have more affordable housing for the workforce.
Yeah, so, you know, this, this, it's no secret, and it is no, you know, no hidden argument here that we need to build more affordable housing. And we're talking for, you know, the average worker that, that provides services to both our city and the surrounding community. You know, teachers, nurses, firefighters, et cetera. So, you know, we need to look at it from a standpoint, and instead of giving and accepting in lieu fees to these developers and to these builders, making sure that the housing is a component of affordability so that these, these employees, these workers can hopefully stay in the community that, that, where they live, they work, where they, where they live. I've been fortunate, my two children, they're homeowners here in the city of Ventura. They both work in, in the surrounding areas. One works here in the county through the court system. And so we definitely have to focus on making housing more affordable for all our workers, including workforce housing.
Thank you. Steph, share with us your thoughts about increasing affordable housing.
Yeah, absolutely. So first and foremost, Ventura absolutely needs rent control stabilization. We need a rent control ordinance so folks don't, out of nowhere, get a ten, fifteen percent raise of their rent, and then they're pushed to Oxnard or Santa Paula or somewhere else in town. So we absolutely need something like that to protect renters, because not everyone wants to own a home. So I know folks who, who want to live in apartments or in condos, they don't want to. So there's that. For the new developments, Ventura desperately needs design standards. I mean, it's one thing to, there's a balance between making sure that we can get housing as quickly as possible, but we also need to balance that with the, the charm and the vibe of the town that the current residents absolutely love. And then with those design standards, make sure that those buildings are built in a high quality and in a way that ensures that those buildings can last for a hundred years, because a lot of these homes are not built well.
Thank you. Jim, same question to you. What are your plans to increase affordable housing?
Well, you know, it's interesting. My son is a plumber, and back in, when I was growing up, a plumber could afford a house. And today, it seems kind of difficult for them to afford a house. And so I, I agree, I agree with what's been said so far. I also believe that we need to make sure that the inclusionary housing absolutely is something that gets done. I mean, you have up to twenty percent or so that that can happen. So we need to encourage the developers to continue on this road, right? And if they want to pay that in lieu fee, so be it. Let's pay that, but let's take that money, and let's put it aside so we could continue to develop affordable housing units with that money that's put aside. You know, I want to look at where is that in lieu fee going, and what are we doing with that? And do we need to reach out to the state and say, hey, you have all this money for homelessness? This would be a great time to take some of that money and help us with affordable housing, because if we don't do that, we're going to end up with more homeless people, which then we got a bigger mess than we really want to have. And that means people that want to live here can live here when we start making plans that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, same question to you about affordable. How would you increase affordable housing?
So the first thing that needs to be done is the council immediately needs to adopt a policy consideration for the reinstatement of a dedicated funding source for affordable housing. So in two thousand and eleven, the state of California eliminated all funding for affordable housing and has not replaced it. So the first thing we need to do is we need to get, talking to our state legislatures to ensure that there's the creation of a dedicated funding source for affordable housing. Second, the city of Ventura is currently operating under the interim inclusionary housing ordinance for, since two thousand and five. So we have not updated our inclusionary housing ordinance since oh five. And so we immediately need, we immediately need to include rental in that. So right now, our inclusionary housing only allows for for sale housing. So all of the development that we've seen recently, and all of that, those apartment complexes, none of them include inclusionary affordable housing. So that needs to be immediately updated so that we can start getting those units on the ground into people. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie, same question. What are your plans to increase affordable housing?
Well, much of the housing we're currently building is market rate and expensive. That new Cora is three thousand dollars a month. I would encourage policies to direct developers to include affordable rentals and for sale units and anything they build citywide. You know, or the payment of fees to build affordable housing elsewhere, and not just the moderate income level like my builder opponent's Haley Point project in Ventura. Moderate means you must earn at least a hundred thousand a year, and when you add in HOA fees, that becomes darn near market rate. So we need truly affordable. Homes for All is seeking fifteen percent very low for rentals and fifteen percent low or twenty percent moderate for, for sale projects. Other things we can do, adaptive reuse of commercial spaces, the inclusion of accessory dwelling units and junior accessory, accessory dwelling units. I ran out of time, but I have a lot of ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Lori, we'll wrap up with you on this question about.
Sure. First, I just want to say that apartments promoted by previous councils that are currently being built utilized a gap in the policy that suggested, in the previous inclusionary housing policy, that if apartments were built, the inclusionary rule doesn't apply to them. And so the previous council trying to get ahead of what affordable housing that was going to happen inevitably wanted to build a bunch of market rate apartments, and unfortunately, that's what we have today. It was a result. I fought to establish strategies for affordable housing. I'll continue to, and we must continue the in its incremental work. It started with the pro-housing designation, started with adopting the eleven recommendation for homes for all, having the arch shelter established, and it continues with the inclusionary housing policy and a lot more, but I only have nine, eight more seconds, so.
Well, we are going to stay with you, Lori, and let you be first on the next question.
Okay.
The roads in Ventura, particularly midtown and east end, are in horrible shape, potholes, damages. What are your views about how to correct the situation with the derelict roads and also dealing with traffic?
Thank you for the question. So this has been one of the most difficult issues to deal. This is one of the most important issues on the east side. Streets, trees, and sidewalks. And unfortunately, the resurfacing of streets is taking a painfully long time. Currently, even my street got halfway paved and is not fully paved. So even as a council member, I'm suffering. I think part of the issue is, as was mentioned by Bill, is when redevelopment ended in two thousand and eleven, that ended the funding mechanism for all city services. That means weed abatement, street abate, weed graffiti abatement, streets, trees, lighting, affordable housing, all that stuff, all the money's gone. And so the gas tax is what funds repairing of the streets. And I fought for the repair of Johnson Drive tooth and nail for a whole entire year for them to switch out another street that was not a major arterial street in order to get Johnson Drive done, and I'll continue to do that for Bristol and North Bank.
Thank you. Marie, let's hear your thoughts about repairing the damaged roads and dealing with traffic.
Well, I mean, the thing, I think residents, when they talk to me about streets and roads and on the East Ventura Community Council, we hear it a lot. They look at what's in front of their own houses, and they are appalled. And I can tell you, I have big weeds growing up in my street, and so I am appalled. But I do understand that the city does need to prioritize the major thoroughfares, and that is completely understandable. But I guess I'll just, you know, start chucking down the weeds. We've got some big problem areas out on the east end. The one eighteen gets super clogged up, and that will take a lot of coordination between the state, the county, and the city on that one. And so that one, I'd like to see fixed very soon. The other thing that bothers me is we've got that new, I think it's three hundred unit apartment building coming up on Johnson Drive, and that freeway access is terrible, and that needs to be taken care of very soon. Thank you.
Bill, same question to you about dealing with derelict streets and handling traffic.
I think we need to take a new look. I think Councilmember Brown pointed out that, you know, we get funded through gas tax. You know, two weeks ago, the governor announced that we're going to be moving to all electric vehicles. So we really need to start taking a hard look at how we actually fund our streets and how those are resurfaced on it. So we've got the Measure O money, you know, we need to continue with that push. But we also need to complete our active transportation plan that we've got in, in the works so that we can actually work on the streets that need to be fixed. And we start to, need to start looking at embracing new forms of technology. Micro mobility in terms of moving around is becoming a whole new pattern that's going to be a game changer. You know, so we got to focus on completing the pedestrian linkage between Montavo and Saticoy so we can use that micro mobility there on it. So there are a lot of, you know, interesting new things that are coming out, and we need to focus on using those to get the the best and smoothest streets possible for the residents of both District Five and the city of Ventura.
Thank you. Bill, please share your thoughts about dealing with the streets and traffic.
You mean Jim?
I'm sorry, Jim. Yes.
Yeah, thank you so much. So I was, I was talking to one of my neighbors just down the street, and he said it had been twenty years since any work had been done in front of his house. And another friend of mine, I said, you know, he was complaining about his sidewalks, and I said, you're complaining about your sidewalks. I, gosh, I wish I had sidewalks. And, and we started looking at, by the way, I, I want to tell you that I am so proud of the Montalbale Community Council because they ended up encouraging the city to get a grant for the sidewalks around the school at Montalbale School. And so there's a grant that's coming in in November. The sidewalks are going to start construction. And I'm just really thrilled that the community council did that and were able to do that. So it can be done. There are grants out there that we could look for. But I, I was the co-chair for Measure O, and so I know that money was, is supposed to go to streets and sidewalks. So we need to look at that money, and we need to set up a game plan that is transparent, that a schedule, so people know when we're coming out, when we're doing it, but we need to be able to create more revenue. Thanks.
Thank you. And Steph, your thoughts about streets and traffic?
Yeah, Bill's clearly been looking at my notes and stealing them because it's largely what he said. I absolutely think we need to start planning now for how we're going to expand the funds for local infrastructure for streets, given that more and more cars on the road are going to be electrical in the future. And so that gas tax money is only going to go down. So Measure O, figuring out more funding opportunities for that. It's honestly, it's very bad. I don't know what's going on in other districts, but District Six really needs to invest heavily in infrastructure. I can't get to the bus stop without walking on Johnson. My kid, my neighbors on the street can't walk to the Little League fields or the elementary school down the street without, they can't do it at all. And so we need to figure out a way to also reduce vehicle speeds, add more speed bumps, add more stop signs, de-center the car around town. Honestly, everyone loves the weather in Ventura, but we can't actually spend time outside, which is bonkers. So, yeah.
Thank you, Steph. And Danny, we'll wrap up with you on dealing with the poor streets and traffic.
Yeah, so I agree with a lot that's been said already, you know, and in District Six, Yeah, so I agree uh with a lot that's been said already, you know, and uh in District Six. Some of those roads are pretty terrible. Uh, you know, uh, coming up to Johnson and uh, you know, visitors or residents, you know. Uh, with the new entry to the Ventura Community Park, you know, try going up Romelli and see what a, you know, rough and tumble drive that is. You know, so and on Bristol. So my goal is to make sure that's one of the first targeted areas is get those roads fixed so we can get more uh. Um, good use uh of those roads. My last twenty years working in the public sector, I have good relationships with both state, local. And national um elected uh officials. So that means that I can work with them and 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 these uh grants. And other ARPA money and so forth that that we're talking about. We need to access that. We need to bring it in here. But I also feel that the the city has not done a very good job of being efficient and effective in the resources of the money where it should go.
Thank you. We'll begin our next question, a little more general in nature, but I want to give you all a chance to share with us your goals. If you are elected, Steph will begin with you. And get you unmuted there. Steph, if you're elected, tell us about your top two or three goals. And also your plans on how to achieve those goals.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, like we were just talking about, I I, if I can in four years. Uh, see my neighbor's kids walk into the school, uh, that is, that's a dream. That's a success right there. So. Reorganizing uh the city of Ventura's um budget to allocate more funding. And effectively get these infrastructure projects uh in happening quickly. Um, is, that is the highest of my priorities. And in addition to that. Uh, if we can get a rent control ordinance in the next four years to protect renters in town, that is also a significant win. Uh, to protect all my friends in town. Um, and so. Uh, those two specifically, and honestly, revisioning uh the industrial park, it's a missed opportunity. It's dead after seven P M. I know the founder of Topa Topa. Uh, we're missing out on huge sales revenue by not uh investing in that area. And um making it uh an awesome place to go.
Thank you. Bill, please share with us your uh top goals and how you will accomplish those goals.
My top three goals are public safety. Uh, we've allowed our fire facilities to fall into some pretty serious disrepair. Uh, so we need to look at upgrading those facilities and we need to look at uh getting our uh fire departments properly staffed. Uh, right now, so that the residents of Ventura and uh particularly the District Five are protected. Uh, second is really revenue enhancements. Um, we need to start, uh, you know, uh, council member Brown mentioned uh. Johnson Drive, we need to look at how Johnson Drive actually works and facilitates. I'm glad the church is in the the movie theater, but we really need to look at allowing that property to go to whatever its next life. Uh, maybe. And then with those revenue enhancements, we need to go into infrastructure. We need to secure our water future. We need to complete the state revenue, the state water connection, uh, that'll benefit the East Ventura residents. We need to do Ventura Water Pure. That'll benefit the uh. Residents on the west side. And then ultimately, we need to figure out how to connect the east side and the west side uh with water. Thank you.
Lori, your top goals and how you're going to accomplish them?
So continue to ensure the implementation of the adopted spending plan to get our fire facilities up and running. And get our firefighters at minimum staffing. That's one thing. Um, I also want to make sure that um. Give me one second. Um, continue leading the general plan to completion because normally the general plan is only supposed to take two years, but because of the pandemic. There's a whole nother year that's added to that process because of delays. I'll continue pushing for additional rental protections. And advocate for the completion of the climate resiliency plan, which is an important part of the general plan as well. It it's also important to continue the whole conversation around affordable housing as we've already discussed, and inclusionary housing and. And how we address unhoused individuals in concert with the county continuing of care and all the other. Uh, organizations uh who are having housing advocates in that field of work. Um.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Let's stop you there. Danny, same question to you. Tell us about your top two or three goals and how you plan to accomplish them.
Sure, uh, as was already said, public safety is number one. You know, I want to make sure that all our residents, businesses and visitors feel safe. You know, uh, I helped uh pass Measure O and being on the committee. You know, when things came our way, there was some of the committee members that were kind of questioning those items. And you know, I had to remind my fellow committee members. Wait a minute, I voted and we passed this tax measure so that we can have more uh public safety on the streets. So that we don't have to worry about going down to the promenade and fear for our safety. So that's one of them. Um, uh, the second one is again, upgrading our infrastructure, fixing the roads, improving our parks and access to them. Supporting our libraries and assisting businesses. And finally, the third one, which is big, uh, I take that back, not the third one. There's homelessness in this one too, but. Uh, making sure our our cities run effectively and fish inefficiently. You've heard me say this already. For all residents, no matter what part of the city they may live. I have experience with public sector budgets. And I know how they're put together and where the money be, it may be hiding.
Thank you. Jim, share with us your plans.
Thank you so much. Um, you know, one of the, when the survey was taken on the city of Ventura, the number one issue was homelessness. And so. That that is without a doubt one of my top priorities. And when you look at Johnson Drive and you look at the. Increase in homelessness that we've had over the last several years, uh, that's something that needs to be addressed. I've already spoken with. Uh, Kevin Clarisi down at the, at the Park Ambassadors, talking about what it would look like to have an ambassador program. Uh, out on Johnson Drive, my, my brother-in-law, just not too long ago, I think probably about a year and a half ago, rode his bike down to. Seven eleven, ends up getting jumped out there. I mean, we need to look at safety, obviously, public safety. But that has to do with the vagrants and things like that that are taking place. Also, Danny said so well, you know, we have the county jail here and. There, when they get out of jail, they're coming down Johnson Drive, they're coming down Victoria. And and that is another area where we need to work with our police department. Making sure as well as our sheriff to make sure that these guys get back to the city that they came from.
Thank you. We'll wrap up this question with you, Marie. Tell us about your top goals and how you will achieve them.
Well, I already talked about our inclusionary policy for housing and that just needs to get done soon. I I understand it stalled right now. And I'd like to see that move along quickly. Uh, the other thing, obviously, going back to what I said before, and. I gotta say, uh, taking the tour with the patrol task force and our ambassadors really made a big impression on me. Project Room Key is about ready to expire and that houses two hundred people in our hotels downtown. Uh, the Baga Bond, I don't know if you guys know this, but it is entirely dedicated to our homeless population. That will expire soon and I do not know where two hundred people go. Uh, and then the other thing, of course, is public safety. And as Bill mentioned, uh, we all went to that presentation that the. Fire department put on and that was very, very concerning. They have multiple calls for service at the same time. And sometimes they can't stack them all and our fire stations are very old. So that has to be a priority, public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Okay, we'll move on to the next question. Bill, you're up first on this. I think we'll stay with this theme of if you're elected. So Bill, if you're elected, tell us what committees, what regional organizations would you like to be involved with? And how much time do you think you can dedicate to the city council duties, reading reports, meetings, all of that?
Yeah, uh, so start out with a little bit of my background, uh, in my, what I call my previous life. I spent fifteen years as city staff. Uh, my last assignment, uh, I was the budget officer for the city of Huntington Beach. So I'm very familiar with the general operations of the city already. And in terms of how various departments are uh structured. So uh, there's not a a come up to speed i- in terms of that. Uh, at all for me. Uh, in regards to the various organizations that I'd like to be on, called in is V T C's. Beat C, V C T C, sorry. Um, uh, in terms of dealing with transportation needs, we need to start interconnecting our cities uh to each other so that people have. Reliable transportation to get from Oxtar to Ventura, Ventura to Santa Paula to Fillmore. Uh, Ojai, et cetera. So those are, that would be the main uh organization that I'd be interested in working on. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny, if you're elected, uh, what are some of the boards or commissions you'd like to be involved in? How much time do you think you can put in? Uh, per week for the council?
So, um, I've already committed to uh both my principals and my president employer and some of my member leaders that. I'll be retiring from my employer in the first quarter of next year. So I will be. Open to spending as much time as it takes to be making sure to be prepared and to review. And to be a a very productive member of the city council. So that's my commitment to the voters. Um, you know, uh, as as Bill said, because of uh some of the jurisdictions that I've dealt with, whether it be Gold Coast Transit District. Or whether it be the Simi Valley tr- transit, transportation is is important. And again, we all want to take more uh cars off the road. And so how can we make that better? And so I'd like to be part of that. Also, I'd like to be part of the Ventura Regional Sanitation District, the Tolon landfill. Uh, that is a uh moneymaker. Uh, unfortunately, I don't think the management of that di- district is the best that it should be. And so I think the that the the workers and the community that it serves can do better.
Thank you. Marie, tell us about uh what boards, commissions you'd like to be involved in, how much time you can put in.
This will be a full-time job for me and I have all that time plus more. I think everyone knows how hard I work. And so my priority will be um the citizens, of course. I specialized in casework in the Assembly and the Senate. And helped people solve their problems with the state. I will be helping people solve their problems with the city. You can count on me to answer all your emails. Uh, I specialized also in the Senate in water issues. Uh, the senator I worked for is the author of. Much of the state's water policy, so I have the background to deal with water policy. So I'm very interested in anything that has to do with water. Also, I am very, climate is a very big deal to me because I did work for Senator Fran Pavly. The author of the state's global warming initiatives and many of the other. Uh, policies that have been adopted a world and nationwide and. Anything having to do with climate, the Clean Power Alliance Board, I am up for it and I'm very excited to do it. Thank you.
Steph, uh, let's hear from you as far as uh what commissions you'd like to be a part of and how much time you can put in.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, absolutely. The Ventura County Transportation Commission, uh, transportation is my biggest priority. So I absolutely want um everything to do with it. Um, and then, I mean, I, if elected, I will dedicate, don't tell my boss, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna dedicate a lot of time to this. I mean, I'm a researcher, so all I do all day every day is read. I read in the morning or the newspaper. Uh, I read during the day for work and I read at night. So um, I'm not intimidated by any uh city reports. I've already gone through a. A bunch of them, uh, preparing for all of this. So I'm not intimidated by it at all. Um, I am very responsive. I'm a young person, so I talk, text, email all day, every day. So I'm ready for this.
Thank you. Lori, if you're elected, tell us about what commissions or boards you want to be a part of, how much time you think you can put in.
So as an elected, um, I've held a a lot of positions um on council. So there's thirty-five committees that that must be split between the seven council members. Um, and I jumped right in and served um as co-chair of the Finance Audit and Budget Committee. I've been chair of the Appointments Recommendation Committee. I'm current Chair of General Plan Committee. Delegate to the Southern California Association of Governments. Um, I was um a member of the Ventura Council of Governments, also the late liaison to the Port Harbor Commission. And even before that, I was um a member of the City of Ventura Downtown Parking Advisory Committee. So I may, I donate approximately two hundred personal vacation hours in order to attend conferences. And respond to constituent requests, uh, emails, uh, meet with staff.
Gonna have to stop you there.
And remain informed. Thank you.
Jim, we'll hear from you, please. What are your thoughts about commissions you want to be part of and how much time you can put in?
Well, thanks so much. First of all, I want to let you know that uh, right now I manage three nonprofits. And uh, I have spoken to each and every one of our boards and they have uh, they have freed me up time in order to do. And cover my responsibilities as a city council member. Um, at one time, we were planting a church. I was working full-time and I was coaching football. That took a lot of time, but we got it done. I will be able to spend the time that I need to in order to make sure. That my responsibilities are are and beyond are taken care of. Um, you know, I'm looking at being on anything that has to do with. With housing. I think um, that's an important part. Transportation, water are all big issues. And so, you know, I plan on getting involved in those areas, but as far as commitment level goes. Uh, I I have that time. I've created that time in my schedule if I'm elected to make sure that everything that needs to get taken care of will be.
Okay, Jim, I'm going to stay with you for the next question. Uh, let's go back to development. We haven't really explored that much. As far as the general plan, I don't really want to get too deep in the weeds there. What I want to understand from each of you is sort of your. Thoughts on the current and future land use development in the city. Uh, what are your thoughts on the kinds of businesses and residents that we should be attracting and retaining? So share with us your philosophy on development, what you uh prove up and what you're against.
Well, thank you. That is a great question. And what, you know, one of the things that's super important is the general plan, obviously, because. That is going to be with us for the next twenty-five to thirty years. Well, understanding that, we really need the voice of our community. What I like, what I want. You know, we need to hear from everybody in our community, all the districts, all the people that live here, need to really be involved. Uh, they don't want, we don't want what happened or what's happening now where we're hearing a lot of people complaining about the buildings that have been put in downtown. Midtown and everybody's up in roar. Well, knowing that those have been approved five and ten years prior. Well, it's so important that we look at every single aspect of that general plan and we give input to that. So we need a vibrant community. There's no doubt about that. So we have to look at the strategic places to put businesses, the strategic places to put um high-density housing. All of those things are super critical and um, but we need to hear the voice of the people. Everybody needs to get involved.
Thank you, Jen. Lori, share with us what your thoughts are on the current and future land use development in the city, what kind of businesses and residents we're trying to attract.
So first, I just want to say property taxes and fee-based services is all the only thing now that funds city services. And so we really need to lean in on economic development. Economic development does not occur without developers. Developers come into the city with public-private relationships. What I've been currently trying to lean into now that we've got through the housing element with the general plan and received. Um, a lot of input from the community is to try to figure out how we're gonna. Create neighborhood master plans so that when somebody comes into the city and form-based, better form-based codes and. Uh, things that clearly delineate what we are going to allow and not allow, so that when they apply. That they're applying and and are required to do what we tell them to do. And that's what I uh commit to, to lean in on from this point forward. The general plan has been more inclusive and more widely distributed and we receive way more responses than any general plan in the past. The past one was a couple hundred. We've had thousands of responses. Um, and I stand behind the work that we've been, that we've been doing so far.
Thank you, Lori. Steph, let's hear from you. What are your thoughts on current and future land use and development? What type of businesses, residents, are we trying to attract?
Yeah, thanks. Um, I absolutely love the general plan. If anyone on the call hasn't been involved. Get on that website um and come to tomorrow night's meeting. There's one uh six o'clock um at City Hall. So definitely join. Um, I have. Three ideas for District Six that I'm very excited about. Um, one, I feel like we need transit oriented. Transit-oriented development around the Metrolink Station. Um, the station is amazing and is underutilized. Uh, if you haven't done the ten dollars to L A on the weekends, do it. It's very fun. Um, two, uh, we need a a transition point between the one twenty-six West. And the one-on-one South, so we can actually re-envision Victoria, so it's not an actual highway like it is right now. Uh, and then third, we need to really revision the industrial park um. Near uh where Topa Topa Cold Street and all of those places are. Uh, to revitalize them, really make it an us, a place to go to at night. There's no residential uh housing over there, so it could be really fun.
Thank you, Steph. Marie, please share with us your thoughts about future development.
Well, you know, the state is, they passed a a number of bills that really incentivize denser housing and um. You know, priorities should be given to the denser growth and our more urbanized, walkable, commercial areas. But at the same, very same time, we have to maintain neighborhood compatibility and we can do that. Um, with our specific plans and good form-based code. And I really feel like we should honor. Our existing specifics plans, especially the one downtown. Now, businesses can live and can be anywhere they want. People can live anywhere they want because we're all commuting. Um, and, but the thing is, we all want to live in a wonderful city. And Ventura is a wonderful city and we need to invest in its livability, its beaches, its. Uh, neighborhood centers, its parks, its schools. That's what's going to attract employers here and that's going to, what is going to attract. Businesses here. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny, same question to you about your plans and thoughts for future development.
Yeah, so again, the general plan is very important to the city and to the residents. And like Jim had said, you know, I think that we need to get more community and residents involvement. I know Lori said that there's been an uptick in the responding, on the responders of that plan, but we can do better. We can always do better. I mean, my, my goal is to listen to what they have to say and make sure that we take action. Working with my colleagues on the council so that we can get to a point where we need to be. As far as, you know, bringing in higher, cleaner paying jobs, you know, we need to look at solar, which has been looked at. We need to look at wind. We need to look at the ocean. We need to look at green jobs. Usually, those are high-tech type of jobs, and those are the jobs of the future that'll help Ventura become and stay the, the city that it has become. I have no desire to leave Ventura, and that's why I still live here. When I did my tour in the Marine Corps, I always said, I'm going back to Ventura. I'm gonna retire Ventura. So we, I want to make sure that everybody's able to enjoy Ventura, to be the beautiful city that it is.
Thank you. And Bill, we'll wrap up with you on your thoughts about the development in the city.
Yeah, so I watched sixty minutes last night. I heard President Biden say we're moving into a post-COVID world, and I think we are selling place more than ever, and community and character, and Ventura is loaded with that. So our general plan needs to reflect that, because we can be attracting a lot more businesses, those higher-paying businesses because of the community, the culture, and the character that we have here in the city. So we need to tie that in as we continue to work on the general plan. And I agree with my two colleagues that also serve in the General Plan Committee. We're very proud of the work we've done to date. And we encourage everybody to come out and be heard. This is an iterative process. And, you know, in regards to where housing needs to be located, we need to continue working on the active transportation plan to ensure that housing is by the transportation nodes. That needs to be the main focus, as opposed to just general areas. We need to tie it into where the transportation is like a transit-oriented development in the Eastmont, Ventura station. Thank you.
Thank you. This question did not come up in the earlier forum tonight, but very important as well. Marie, you're up first on this question. What should be the city's response to changing climate issues like high temperatures, rising sea level, energy consumption, water? Share with us your views on adapting to climate changes.
Well, I don't know if everyone realizes that The Washington Post did a study, and we are the most impacted county in the entire United States. We are the fastest-warming county. And this is a priority for us, and we saw what happened with the Thomas Fire, with the the driving winds that sent that fire down upon us, and we were already dealing with sea level rise, coastal infrastructure is crumbling. So what can we do? Well, we're doing it right now. Finally, we're, we're creating a plan that goes along with our general plan that will put us towards sustainability. And I'm very, very excited about this plan. And also, you know, we've done a lot of the low-hanging fruit things. But I see money coming down the road for all of this. And since I personally have been very invested in solar, I've got everything on my own house. I want to see solar go on parking lots, go everywhere, charging stations everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, please share with us your thoughts about how to deal with changing climate issues.
Well, you know, agreeing with, with Marie in this, I mean, we are, we are doing it right now. We are, we are taking those steps and making sure that we are protecting our environment. I mean, I, I'm super excited about the things that are taking place. But, you know, we already see things that are happening. I mean, pretty soon, we're gonna be going electric. Pretty soon, we can't, we won't be able to purchase any more gas cars. I know that Bill is, is, you know, he, he had shared with me, you know, eventually, every, everything being built is gonna be electric, and there's gonna be conversions that are being made. So there's, there's all sorts of things that are going on right now, which I think obviously benefits each and every one of us. And what Marie was saying about the, this county being affected, wow. I mean, we just experienced that just not too long ago. And, and but I'm excited that we are taking the steps to make sure that what we have to do is getting done.
Thank you. Danny, please share with us your plans for dealing with changing climate issues.
Yeah, well, this is, you know, gonna be a never-ending situation. And so we either gonna learn from, you know, others, what they're doing, know that what's been done, and to continue to prevent, you know, erosion of our shores, for example. You know, they built up Surfers Point, and we had to do that because, you know, again, the, the ocean was just tearing that apart. You know, I, I think we need to like be more green, you know, we need to plant more trees, and we need to be cognizant of being drought tolerant at the same time. I mean, I think we've seen in the news lately, especially during this latest heat dome wave down in LA, they were painting some of the playgrounds with some kind of heat-resistant toppings so that they, you know, the students would be able to enjoy their playground time and not have to like boil in the sun. So there's ways that we can do it, and, and, and I agree that we've been doing some of that stuff. We just have to continue it, be smart, and, and looking at what other jurisdictions and other counties, other pieces, parts of the country are doing so that we can do the same.
Thank you. Steph, same question to you on climate?
Yeah, absolutely. So we absolutely need to make sure we're incorporating sea level rise and future flooding risks in our general plan and rezoning plans. And luckily, they are being considered, which is really good. But we also really need to make sure that we're investing in our firefighters well enough that they are fully supported. And then lastly, I am beating it again and again, but transportation, forty-eight percent of Ventura's greenhouse gas emissions come from on-road transportation. We need to figure out a way to get folks, have it accessible so folks can get around town without being in a car to enjoy the weather. And part of that is figuring out a sidewalk in a street system that incorporates and really lives out the twenty-twenty-three master plan so that we are shaded and comfortable while we're moving around as well.
Thank you. And Lori, please share with us your plans for dealing with climate-related issues.
So to continue supporting our environmental sustainability division within the city to support what the general plan is coming up with for environmental, our environmental response within our general plan. But also, as a SCAG, I'm, I'm, as a member of the SCAG Regional Council, due to my dedication on that board, I was appointed to the Legislative Committee. I'm also on the Racial Equity Committee. But most of all, as it relates to this question, I just had our meeting today for our Climate Resiliency Committee. And we were talking about, and I gave a lot of suggestions for SCAG to support cities like ours who may need assistance with funding and regional relationships and partnerships, and that's what's necessary for this heavy lift. So things like undergrounding electrical lines, work, leaning into workforce development incentives, you know, making sure we have solar equity for disadvantaged communities, and in leaning into regional water authorities, and much like a regional transportation authority, which is also.
Thank you, Lori. To stop you there. Bill, let's hear from you about your thoughts for dealing with climate change.
Yeah, we need to, obviously, we understand managed retreat as those opportunities present themselves and hardening our seawalls, you know, in the areas along the coast. But we really need to start focusing on is the forty thousand-plus homes that exist in Ventura today and how we incentivize their transition to electrical usage. So we have, you know, solar, we have heat pumps, we have electrical water heating, we have induction cooking. So we have to start looking at programs and incentivize folks as they're remodeling their homes to start bringing this technology in on it. So, and there's a variety of ways we can do that through either fee reductions, expedited plan check or something like that. So but that's what we had to start working backwards. We can stop the needle from moving to the right. We need to start moving the needle to the left. And to do that, we need the existing homes to start converting to those electrical clean energy alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny, we're gonna begin the next question with you, and this one will be about rent control and tenant protection. So tell us, Danny, are you in favor of city rent control ordinances? What will you do to protect tenants who are facing increasing rental rates?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I, I am in favor of rent control, at least keep it in the single digits. As a former mobile homeowner in a mobile home park, it was very important. You know, after my first marriage ended, you know, I had my two children to raise. And so what was the affordable part for me? Get into a mobile home in a mobile home park. And, and you can imagine, a lot of those people that live in mobile homes are on fixed incomes. And so I totally support rent control of some fashion, something that's fair for both the landowners, but also that's fair for the people that have to deal with those increases. You know, I, I think that the, the rest stability and also making sure that building owners, apartment building owners, et cetera, don't, you know, use any kind of, you know, holes that might force the tenants to face increased rents and then out in the street. So I would definitely work hard with, with those to make sure that the residents are protected.
Thank you. And Steph, same question to you. Tell us about your position on rent control and tenant protections.
Yes, absolutely. I support rent control ordinances, and we need one as soon as possible. It is very vulnerable to be in a position of renting and out of nowhere, the landlord decides to increase the rent and having to then be pushed out and being forced to leave. And that's absolutely, that should not happen. So yes, I support it. And in the remaining thirty seconds, I will just follow up to something that Bill just said in terms of figuring out how to upgrade existing homes. If anyone is on the call right now who owns their home and wants to upgrade something, please Google the Inflation Reduction Act. There were, it just passed, and there's thousands of dollars that go towards homeowners to update, upgrade new windows, heat pumps, a ton of stuff. So if you're interested in that, you want to upgrade your home, lower your energy bill, definitely look that up.
Thank you. Jim, same question to you about your views on a rent control ordinance or putting in place some type of tenant protection.
Well, yeah, I believe that, you know, we already have a rent control law from the state of California. And I'm not, I don't, I'm not in favor of the city having an additional rent control on top of that or rents stability on top of that, because it, what we have right now is a good protection for our, for those that are renting. See, when, you know, we, we have to look at the homeowners as well, when you look at telling them that they cannot increase their rent, and, and that's one of the reasons they got into business, into renting their place, and now all of a sudden, we're telling them they can't do that. But, you know, obviously, it's gotta be fair. And I think the state has great, a great regulations in regards to what we can charge, what we increase in rent. And so I don't think that the city needs to get involved with another rent control on top of that. I think, yes, tenants need to be protected, absolutely, but I think we have something in place right now that will work. And so that's my.
Thank you, Jim. Bill, please share with us your view about city rent control or protecting tenants.
We need strict enforcement. We have bad players that are currently overcharging or not following the rules. And we need to implement a program of strict enforcement of enforcing the existing rules that protect both the tenants and the homeowners. Or not the, sorry, not the homeowners, but the landlords on it. There are obligations that are not being met that are currently under law, and we need to work with the District Attorney's Office to ensure that we have that strict enforcement. And then we need to start implementing new programs to look at ways like inclusionary housing ordinances that actually increase our housing stock of affordable housing on it. So but again, my key point would be we need strict enforcement of the existing rules, which just is not happening today. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie, please share with us your view about a, are you for a city rent control ordinance?
Well, I, I heard the folks at the last city council meeting, and, and I totally understand what they need and want, and we definitely have some issues here in the city. So we passed a minor bit of tenant protection, and then the state has more. I think we need to look at even more for this city as far as rent control. I've read a lot of studies. The state prevents us from doing certain things, like it only can apply to older buildings. And so what happens sometimes is landlords just demolish those old buildings and they build brand-new ones. And, you know, that leads to gentrification, rents being increased in the long run. So what I think would work better if we're gonna go down that path would be to have rent control, but with incentives for our landlords to make it more palatable to them. And so they would be more inclined to do upgrades.
Thank you, Marie. Time, time's up. And Steph will wrap up this question with you, your position on a city rent control ordinance and protecting tenants.
Lori. I've gone already.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Lori will go to you next. It's getting late for me, let's face it.
That's okay.
All right, Lori, let's hear from you about your views.
Oh, you want to hear from me first? Okay, sorry. I just want to say in twenty nineteen, I met with mobile home rent orders, owners in Lemonwood because there was a big misunderstanding about cracking back open the current mobile home ordinance. I sat with them for three hours after meeting with the city attorney for two hours to try to nail down and reading the full ordinance and helping them to understand what the pros and cons were. And at the end of the day, we were able to do a survey, and it's gonna be brought back sometime next year to determine whether or not they actually want to do that. I wanted to say that first. There are gaps in the state law, and we're intentionally left open in, in specific areas vaguely in order to allow for local interpretation. We do have a rental protective ordinance, as was mentioned, to address the gap of renovations. But right now, assisted living centers right now, specifically built for affordable housing, are raising rents. And we may have seniors on the street if we don't address that issue with.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Well, we reached the point of the forum to go ahead and start our closing statements. We're gonna do it in the reverse order of the opening. And that means, Bill, you're up. When you're ready, you have one minute for your closing statement.
Well, again, I'd like to thank the Legal Women Voters of Ventura County for having us out here tonight. It's really been an informative process. Like I said, I am your candidate for the fifth district of Ventura. My platform is public safety, revenue enhancements, and infrastructure. Additionally, we need to start looking at some of the bigger issues that are affecting District Five. We need to start figuring out a plan to finish community park. So as one of my long-term objectives will be to identify funding sources and potentially work with residents to figure out a plan to move the community park forward towards its ultimate completion. So again, I've raised my family here. I'd love Ventura. I'm looking forward to representing you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate, Danny Carrillo.
Yeah, thank you, David and Kathy, and also the League of Women Voters for hosting us. You guys do an excellent job, and I, this is my second time participating. And as I mentioned, I ran for office back in twenty-eleven, and if I didn't, well, I did. I mention it now. So, you know, my, my tour in the Marine Corps was, was part of the best days of, of my, of my life, and it taught me leadership. And it also taught me integrity. So if you want somebody that knows leadership and somebody who has integrity, who's gonna deliver for you, then I ask for the opportunity to serve you. You know, my work with, working with my council colleagues to better serve our residents effectively and efficiently, not just in my district, but citywide. Be fully prepared to participate, contribute, and lead in council meeting discussions and decisions, especially on behalf of those residents who do not have a voice. Have an open-door policy and always listen before making a decision. This includes any and all stakeholders dealing with difficult or controversial issues. I ask for the opportunity to serve you, and I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Marie Lakin.
My extensive work in this community and beyond, my endorsements, our mayor, Oxnard's mayor, council members, the president of our school board, our District Five School Board Member, county supervisors, our Congresswoman, our state senator, the Citizens for Hillside Preservation, and my District Five neighbors. Our new council will be making some very important land use decisions in the next years. You have some very clear choices in this particular election. You have in me a longtime community leader who has the policy background in time to serve. My District Five opponent is a developer and the president of the Building Industry Association. I promise you, I will serve you with integrity and fairness, listening to all sides. I do my homework, I answer my email, and helping others solve problems is a great joy for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Our next candidate is Steph Carba.
Thanks, David, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for having me so much. This has been very fun. All I do all day, every day is solve environmental problems for Patagonia, and I'm ready to do that for the city. And I'm especially ready to do that for District Six. My number one priority is transportation. I'm gonna do everything I can over the next four years to ensure that transportation projects are budgeted for. to ensure that transportation projects are budgeted for and started and get done in the district. And beyond that, I want folks to get offered jobs that are in Ventura, and they decide to live in Ventura as well. I can't tell you how many folks get high-paying, great jobs at Patagonia, and they end up in Ohio or Santa Barbara over Ventura, and that should not be the case, even though I make my pleas to them. So I love this town. If you ever see me around town, I have a little white Vespa or a red bike, and you can come say hi.
Thank you, Steph. Our next candidate is Lori Brown.
Yes, I will continue to stand for the three things that always have, advocating for economic development initiatives, champion affordable housing alternatives, and creating engagement opportunities for the underserved. I will also continue leading the general plan to completion, continue pushing for additional rental protections, and advocate for the Climate Resiliency Plan. I have never wavered. I will continue to advocate for street resurfacing on Bristol and push for more aggressive funding for sidewalk repairs, more than what we already approved. And I have a proven record of protecting housing options for women, seniors, veterans, working families. And I will remain accountable. I am the most, I'm still the most qualified, and I have a proven record serving this city since two thousand and eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last candidate is Jim Durant.
Thank you. I've spent the past two decades bringing community members, agencies, and businesses together to find effective solutions to help Ventura residents. I understand the connection between city planning, infrastructure, the local economy, and the concerns and values of Ventura city residents. I believe we need transparency, accountability, and clear communication in order to achieve the goals at hand. I have the ability to identify other people's talents and strengths, and I'm able to draw on those talents and strengths as we work together to accomplish the mission and vision of our city. Based on my experience, I see an opportunity to make some very positive changes in our city that will affect generations to come, and I would greatly appreciate your support. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for Ventura County for tonight's forum.
Thank you to all of the candidates. We certainly need this in a democracy to have people willing to run for office, and it's certainly even more difficult and challenging with districts getting people to run. So thank you to all of you for doing that. I'd like to share with the audience a little bit of quick information here regarding the upcoming election. You will get your ballots mailed to you around October tenth. And you can visit wheresmyballot.sos.ca.gov to register and know where your ballot is at all times. You can return it via mail, drop boxes, return it to a voting center once those open. A lot of good resources. Voters Edge down here on the bottom left is another resource where you can go and put in your address and find out information about all the candidates in city councils, school board, congress. You can learn about their positions on various issues. I'd like to thank the League's volunteers tonight, Kathy Morgan, Maddie, Cheryl, Pat, and I'm David Marin, thanking you all for coming tonight. We have more forums scheduled. This one will have its video posted within about twenty-four hours. Just go back to our LWBventuracounty.org website and click on candidate forums. Thank you all, and don't forget, only about forty-nine days to the election. Good night from the League.